What's up, man?
Hey.
Hey.
Clay, how's your, uh, how's your new, um, criminal justice teacher? Is he good?
He's good. He's knowing.
He's got the biggest biceps.
Biggest forearms, definitely. Has he arm wrestled every boy in this class yet?
Well, I, if he is, I hadn't heard about it.
Gotcha.
I've seen him at the football game last night, and some people just idiot about it.
Oh, yeah.
I remember the fight breaks out, and he'd be like, yes, look at the SRO. I'm not even dealing with this. Y'all's problem.
Credentials.
That, that worked out really good.
Who's the SRO replaced? Has there been one? Has there been an SRO?
They told us they were filling all their own ship people before they could let one go, so we haven't officially got one.
But, oh, I think you said Jordan Bell was the possible.
That's who, that's who we're probably gonna get once they get straight.
That'd be good.
Is it, is it true that they're gonna be hiring like seven of them? And because, because of a grant or what?
It's the governors.
The governors.
Yeah. That's security, security budget.
Interesting.
And they offer their salary for one, I think. Isn't it one additional? They, they pay for two. We pay for one. Two, okay. With that additional salary, with that. With that safe, with that school, safety school grant that we've always got, safe schools grant. What's the timeline on the first day of the white guy? I mean, they got the money. Well, there is a time limit. I mean, there is a time scale for them to get trained on, so they have to go through some training.
I think Jeremy Hurst maybe is gonna possibly do that.
That would be awesome, but are you serious?
Well, I, 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 maybe not.
I don't, I don't know if he's back. I don't think they go back in law enforcement, but.
Maybe not.
But Mark Griffin told me they had like twelve good candidates, so I don't know. That's good.
Be really good.
All right, it is seven o'clock. If everyone will please stand before we begin our meeting tonight, I'm gonna ask Jeff Harris to leave us a word of prayer, and Brandy, if you'll lead the pledge, please.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, I thank you for this day. Lord, thank you for the, uh, just the opportunity to come together, Lord, just to gather and, uh, do your business, Lord. I just pray as we go through this time, Lord, that you be honored with the decisions that we make, Lord, that we be given stewardage of the things you've given us, Lord. And we pray for our children in this county, Lord, and the faculty, Lord. And I pray you give the faculty strength and guidance as they guide our children, Lord. And just, uh, can we thank you most of all for your son, Jesus Christ. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, baby Seagull. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Kilsner to call the robe, please.
Shane Connor.
Here.
Ben Couples.
Here.
Jeff Harris.
Here.
Becky Hudson.
Here.
Clay Rogers.
Here.
Brandy Cherry.
Here.
All present.
All right, there is a quorum present, so we will officially call the meeting to order for September. And the first item on the agenda is a recommendation to accept the board agenda for tonight. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the agenda is set. Uh, the next item and the first item of business is the September meeting each, each year is when we, uh, select the board chairman for the upcoming year, the vice chairman, and the Tennessee legislative representative. Uh, so to begin that process, I want to turn control of the meeting over to our vice chairman, Ben Couples.
At this time, first and foremost, we will, I'll ask for nominations for board chairman.
I nominate Shane Connor.
Any others? Well, since he's the only nomination, all those in favor. You need to say.
Say again.
Since he's the, it's been.
Jeff's seconded.
Nominated and seconded, and is only, uh, name on the, on the docket, then Shane, looks like you're the board chair.
Thank you. Well, at this time, I'll open up the floor for nominations for the vice chairman or chairperson.
I nominate Ben Couples.
I'll second.
Nomination's been made and seconded. Are there any other nominations? If not, uh, if you choose to accept, you will be named the board vice chairman by acclamation. All right, so it will be Ben Couples. All right, uh, then next we have the legislative representative. Uh, this is a position that is an advocate for us, between us and our state representatives in legislature. Do I hear a nomination for the Tennessee legislative representative?
Mr. Brandy Cherry.
Second.
Nomination's been made and seconded. Do you choose to serve if elected?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other nominees? All right, if there are no other nominees, and she will accept that position, that will be named the legislative representative by acclamation. So, and then congratulations to you, Mrs. Brandy, and Miss Seagull.
You can do it.
All right, so moving forward, uh, the next item on the official agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the consent?
Now, I wanna make sure that everybody saw that there was an additional, uh, section of budget amendments with our most recent consolidated, uh, budget that was passed.
Yes, for now.
So that would be included.
So on that consent agenda tonight, there's simply the minutes of the last meeting and these budget amendments, uh, that you've been presented with in your packet and before the meeting. So is there a motion to approve that?
I make my first consent.
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded. The consent agenda, uh, there is no discussion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, it is approved. Uh, we have no delegations, uh, tonight to, uh, that have requested to appear, but we move into our public comment section, and we do have one on our list tonight. Uh, so, Ms. Finch, you'll be allowed to, to speak. He chooses to speak, uh, of course, on a public comment. It is on an actionable item on our agenda. He is gonna speak, uh, board on item number nine, which will be coming up, the district-wide fundraiser. And according to board policy, you have, uh, two minutes to share your thoughts.
Sure. Uh, I just looked at the TSBA policies for fundraising and stuff, and I just wondered if there could be some more transparency on the amount that's going to the school versus buying the product. Uh, like last year, for instance, I ended up with like four cases of strawberries, uh, and I don't, it was to pay for a banquet for the band, and then when it came time to have the banquet, uh, it was still potluck, and we had it in the cafeteria. So I just, more, some more transparency on, if it could go home in the fundraiser even, like, hey, out of every sale, twenty dollar candle, eight dollars of that goes to the school, the other twelve bucks a candle for whoever. Um, I just think the difference, it would be, I know I would appreciate it more, and I've talked to a lot of parents about it, if there could be some clarity, because if it came down to like a fifty-fifty split, I'd rather just hand the band teacher a hundred dollars than pay fifty dollars for some strawberries and fifty dollars for the band kind of deal. And I know it says that there's, in, in the policy, it says that the margin of profit can be paid to the school for each fundraiser. Just that there could be some transparency maybe in the fundraiser packaging of how much of that goes, what percentage of the sales goes directly to the school versus.
No, I would say, uh, internally, maybe it needs to be public. Your request more of a public, but you are required.
This will go into the public.
This will be, I mean, as far as, yeah, you, this will be a public, uh, document once it's approved tonight, but every time a club or organization chooses to, they must have their fundraiser approved at one, at each year. This is the meeting tonight.
No, I'm correct.
All right, there is a list where they turn in a fundraiser of their margin of profit, how much they should receive. So maybe, I guess, maybe it should be clearer when they're promoting their fundraisers, promote the margin of profit.
That's, that's all.
Okay, sure.
We'll make sure that that gets communicated to all the ones who have submitted. But now, the, the paper will run this spreadsheet.
Okay.
And in that process, the margin of profit is shown.
Okay.
So if it's a later, not yet done fundraiser, you can see what it would be as far as, and, and the minimum to get it approved is, it's gotta be at least thirty percent. We'd rather have, yeah, thirty percent, because some of these businesses make this, this is their living.
Yeah.
And we would rather, personally, I would rather see more of them done locally, where you can make them more, a higher margin of profit, which would stay with the school.
No, we appreciate you sharing, and, uh, look for that in the paper, and also, like Mr. Kilsner said, communicate that with these clubs and sponsors when they publicize their fundraising. Thank you. All right, uh, that's the only public comment we have requested for tonight's meeting, so we'll move into our actionable agenda items, which we began, uh, with a recommendation from the TSBA to revise the board policy. That would be board, board policy four point seven zero zero, and I'll have Mr. Kilsner speak a little more to that. It's about our testing programs.
The, uh, and again, just so you can distinguish the two, I've got two policies in your packet that are titled four, seven, seven, testing programs. If you look at the one that's dated for tonight, that'd be nine nineteen, that's the one that I should have included as a draft until it was approved. But these, this is the, uh, we made mention of this, uh, in earlier sessions when we had a large section of, uh, board policy adjustments with state law changes. This was one still yet to come because the, the state board of education had to give some rules for us to follow. And I use the terminology, they're not using it, but it's kinda like a CLEP test. Students have the opportunity to take up to four, uh, tests that can provide the same, uh, well, it gives them the equivalency of taking the course if they pass it. Uh, there's up to four. It's included in your board packet. What I've done is highlighted the section, uh, it's actually language straight from the, uh, from the, uh, I think it's straight from the, uh, TSBA's language. The ones that are highlighted represents the courses that we already offer and that what we would include, the high school would include as those, uh, exit exams or exams for credit. Um, it's gonna be provided on a, uh, per semester, and the recommendation from the high school leaders is that this would occur during the first two weeks of each semester. There would be some process to determine, it would be communicated to students, and then the students have an opportunity to arrange this either with administration or school counselors, just to make sure that these are courses that they are needing for graduation. And then they can take these, they only take them one time, so they have one-time opportunity to take these courses that are highlighted, and, um, they have to score a minimum of eighty percent to get credit. But, as it says also, and this is one of the things that may, maybe not diminish, but get them to really, uh, study well or prepare themselves well, whatever grade they make on it, if it's a course, if they pass it, eighty percent or higher, then that also goes toward the GPA calculations. So it's not something that just they take the test and they get the credit and that's it. It will be factored into the GPA. But the high school leadership is here. They, they were very involved in, in this process for this draft. Uh, it'll be the final page of four point seven oh oh, the draft, which is dated nine nineteen, under high school credit exams for eligible courses. They helped craft that, so it is my recommendation. We have to have some policy anyway regarding this. It is my recommendation that we accept what the high school has recommended.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation for the board policy four point seven oh oh?
I'll make a request.
To accept it.
Motion's been made.
I'll second.
Seconded, okay. Uh, any questions or discussion on that while it's on the floor?
So it's a, a senior, and they, uh, they, they test out of some of those, they still have to come to school?
Yes.
They would, they will still have to come to school?
Yeah, they still have to take their, they still have to take courses, but again, this of, and it's only four classes. Um, and you see the list of them, so it's not just seniors. It can be any grade level, uh, that you can do that.
If you only need so many credits and you reach all those by Christmas time, your senior year, you would still have to come to school the other semester?
Um, Coach Murley has some options for those.
We, we have opportunities for students that have, uh, met all their requirements for graduation at Christmas. There's some options that they, uh, depends on if they're building enrollment or something, but there's, there's options where they don't have to come the entire day, or some, some, some students, not at all, but.
Gotcha.
But, you know, again, what we're trying to do, moving toward that innovative school model as an example, is to give them more freedom to have opportunities to go work-based learning environment situations where it's not just a one period time, or to invest more time into if they wanna pursue welding, or if they wanna pursue some other career path that has a CTE or a TCAD, uh, certification associated with it. That gives them more uninterrupted time to get it done.
Good. Any questions or comments? If none, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is approved. Uh, next on our agenda, we have the approval of the ESAR three point oh plan for the remaining funds of the ESAR funding that has been, uh, accessed these past couple of years, and I'll have Mr. Kilsner, uh, speak to that a bit more.
Well, and, and I apologize because the conversation that I had, I was under the impression of what I received from Mr. Finnickmore was giving more explicit details about what's included, because Clay had asked earlier what is actually included, that one point six million. These are commitments that the district has made. A, a certain portion of it has to be for learning loss, but it includes purchases such as curriculum, um, any type of instructional supports that we have. We did initially, uh, budget the first year that we had the ESAR three, the, uh, school bus purchases that we had. We purchased, uh, more than. Seven or eight buses? Nine, uh, which justified was, at that time, this was when we were in the COVID, uh, is to have more buses. If we had the drivers, they could thin the herd down as far as the number of students that had to be on each bus, rather than have them loaded with three kids per seat. That was a concern initially. But, um, Shane was involved in the, the public forum, the community, uh, as part of the commitment with the ESAR, all the ESAR budgets, you had to have community involvement with the process. There was a survey, I don't know if all of you did, I know Shane did, because we talked about it the other day. Uh, there was a survey to complete where he listed, itemized out, and, uh, Clay, I can share that with you. Uh, but it's an itemized list of where those expenditures would go. And this is an approval process that in, that is a part of the requirements for the ESAR three budget. The board has to consider it, approve it. And then the pay down has to be completed by the end of this fiscal year. So this is the last of it, the last of the funding stream with the ESAR.
All right, is there a motion to approve the ESAR three point oh plan, uh, for those remaining funds?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any additional comments or questions? As Mr. Kilsner said, it's important, though, there is a community group of stakeholders, including teachers and community members, family members, who decided if all the best use of this, and then they had to approve it.
Yeah, and I apologize. I thought it was included in his paperwork. I'll make sure after the meeting's over that I'll send it all to you through email so you can see. But it's, 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 uh, it's gone through the scrutiny of our leadership and, uh, and, and the community stakeholders, because they had to vote yea or nay with it, with the plan.
Yes, the motion's been made and seconded. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of that approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right, it is approved. Uh, next, we are going to look at and discuss the district-wide fundraiser activities that have been submitted for the upcoming school year. Each year, the coaches and the sponsors and the school leaders request these, that to be approved, and there are some criteria for these, and, Mr. Kilsner, you can share a bit about that.
Well, it's already been discussed, uh, this is district-wide. The approval process goes through the school leadership principal first, and then it goes through, uh, through, uh, my, uh, approval second. In the process, again, things that we have to know is, we wanna make sure that they have full knowledge of what's in their budget. The, the purpose of them to do these fundraisers has to have justification. I'm, I'm seeing that it's a little hard to read, but you can see, because of the size of the print, you can see what their justification for, the reasons for the fundraiser. Just like it's already been discussed, one of the key things that I would like to see is, what is your margin of profit? Because I've been in those circumstances where you work yourself like a dog to sell off on something, and a very small percentage stays with the, the kids or the students that you're representing. So you wanna see as much funding can stay with the, uh, the students, or the group, or whatever team, uh, or organization's represented. Another thing that I consider as a significant part is the community service project. That's something that was added several years ago, and that's where we just don't ask for handouts from the community, but we demonstrate to them how we, as the, as the groups that are asking for these fundraisers, how they turn around and offer some type of community service back to the, uh, to the community they serve. So, as you see there, there's some information included about, uh, what their specific community service project will be and when they plan to, uh, do it. Sometimes it's, uh, a real good service, which is keep some of the school grounds clean, uh, so they pick up the trash and keep the areas, uh, better than they found them. Um, but anyway, this, pending your decision, this will go in the, uh, local paper, uh, for publication.
Is there a motion to approve this list for the new school year?
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All right, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
I would add one other thing, that any type of fundraiser that includes food products that don't satisfy the SMART snacks, which is the federal guidelines that we have to follow. The state does give, the federal, the federal government does give you some latitude to include it, but it's very limited, and the plan that we have is any specific group that asks like a Krispy Kreme donut fundraiser sale. You can only do up to two, one per semester. So it does limit the number of cookie sales, candy sales, all those things. They are included, but it's limited, and we, we scrutinize those going through.
Any other questions? All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Is, uh, all those in favor of approving this list, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that list is approved. Uh, the final couple of points of the meeting tonight, we're just sharing some updates, and, uh, each month, I like to give Mr. Kilsner a moment to go over a, a monthly review of the vision and, and, uh, things within the system, so.
Well, you know, I'll start with where, uh, it begins on section ten of your board agenda. We've had now two meetings with this Portrait of the Graduate, uh, Community Involvement Group. It's a design team developing a brand. I've included some examples of different brands that's around. Uh, the one brand in the lower right-hand corner, that's Bartlett from Shelby County. So that's, and that's a recent brand that was just developed last year. This just, again, gives a purpose of why we're doing the work. It is not mandated by any organization. This is just something that allows the community to get more actively involved in what is the, the perception that they support as far as what a graduate should have from Chester County schools. And the first process was just to look at the landscape of how technology impacts our, our, you know, our world, our schools. And then this most recent one was a collective group of looking at different competencies and the strength of each competency that we're discussing. Um, the examples that you have here, you see a range of, like, in one case where there's six competencies identified to the amphitheater, public schools, that has eight competencies, Bartlett has six. So these represent a list of competencies that our community stakeholders have looked at and weighed in on which ones have the most merit. And we've had good robust conversations with members of our community, and I would say that in one case, uh, the conversation included a person who is very active in our schools, got kids, grandkids, have all gone through our school system. They're also a community-involved, uh, person, and, um, the emphasis is on which of these competencies really invest in the soft skills, that local industries, local businesses really have been speaking to me for several years of which ones to, you know, the soft skills that will perpetuate the best type of productive citizen in the community, the best workers in the community. So, again, the work we have, we've got another meeting early October next month, and then we've got another meeting late in October, and at that meeting following that, the board will see what Chester County's brand will look like, because it'll be developed by that time for board approval. And if you remember when we met last spring in, uh, Pigeon Forge, this will give guidance to five-year plans that will feed into, uh, district improvement plans that will feed in eventually into the school improvement plan. So this is a more of a foundational piece that our community stakeholders have really appreciated. I've had really good positive feedback from those who have been active with it. So look forward to finishing this out, to have something that's got a Chester County example to, to, uh, begin to display around. And this, again, this is more than just school spirit. This is really having some teeth with it of what we want to see all of our students through all the grades, not just high school, but all the grades to invest in as we, uh, again, develop this Portrait of the Graduate.
Want to share anything on your academic performance?
Yeah, if you notice also, and, and Dr. Maurice is here also, if you have some really harsh questions that I'm unable to answer, because he is our district-wide testing coordinator, but he, he provided, uh, district leaders, uh, a week or so ago, that some of the data that we've had, uh, since this summer have, have been released from embargo. So some of this information can be shared to the public and has to, as, as we have already shared, we've got it posted on the door outside. And as I shared with, uh, the agenda, um, content, the left side, these are celebrations as it reflects. The left side of that sheet represents the achievement side of our success. Anything that is, where it says meet an AMO or a double AMO, that is annual measurable objectives. That are, those are certain levels of performance that that, say, third grade math or fourth grade ELA, there's a certain level which is established based on the work done last, uh, the previous spring. So like for science in seventh grade, you know, you, you look at whatever that achievement level was, the number of students who scored proficient or advanced, or now they call it meeting or exceeding expectations. Somebody whistle.
Okay. Pretty sure it was my little daughter back there.
Oh, okay. I didn't. I thought I was, I thought I misspoke, so. So Charlie, do I need to say something better or something? Okay. Anyway, uh, a certain level of proficiency is established, and they raise the bar slightly each year. On the left-hand side, these grades, these, uh, subject areas have either met the AMO, which is satisfied either meeting or exceeding that annual measurable objective, or done it twice as fast, which is through that double AMO. And those measures tie into our accountability that's based on point system where schools are identified if they're gonna be reward schools or, uh, considered on track, or in the worst-case scenario, priority school. Um, so on the left-hand side, this is, these are several examples of grade level and subject, uh, and school level, where you see the, uh, AMO and the double AMO met, either or. Uh, and, uh, proud of that success on the, on the, again, this is the achievement side. That's meeting a certain criteria of meeting or exceeding expectations with the learning. Then on the right-hand side of the same page is the growth measure. Now, the growth measure is simply measuring how far a student from day one of school to day end of school, have they grown a full grade level, or have they attained the, the learning necessary for that subject matter? And it's based on a five-level, uh, scale. Level five is the highest. That means that you have significantly exceeded the expectations for growth beyond a year, and that's in comparison with every school, uh, across the state. So like, for example, the first one mentioned is where East Chester Elementary has third grade math and science as level five. That means compared to all other third-grade students across the state, our kids exceeded the expectations for learning for that year. Uh, and we see that with the middle school for fourth grade math and fifth grade ELA in science, for the junior high, seventh grade social studies and eighth grade math. For high school, it was, um, US history. And then, uh, overall, talking about a composite where you take in consideration all of the subject matters that are included with the accountability, and we have level five school-wide composites for East Chester, Jacks Creek, and the middle school. And personally, I'm trying to remember. And personally, I'm trying to remember, and I don't think we have, had three schools identified with that level of growth. So we're making progress, we're moving in the right trajectory. I don't think any of the leaders here would say we're satisfied where we are, but we are going the right direction. So I know that in the year 2021, we had high levels of growth across the state. I think part of that was because we were in school every day, even though it was a challenge to be in school with the COVID guidelines that we were dealing with, but a lot of those schools were going part-time. So in comparison with our peers, our neighbors, we were getting a little bit, well, we're getting a lot farther down the road. And then last year, seemed like the pendulum swung the other way. But now, everybody's back in school, the COVID concerns as far as the guidelines with excessive numbers of days out because of the restrictions there, that's passed. And here, this is a measure where it's putting us back on an even scale with different districts across the state. And having those three schools separate that have those level fives growth is, it's accomplishments. We're proud of it. So both on the achievement side and the growth side, we're having some things that we have, really were celebrating. And coming up in the first of November is when the school-level grades and the report card at the state level will generate, that, that information will be afforded then. We still have some work yet to be done about what's going to be included in that school-level grade, and it's an A-through-F grading scale, just like what you're accustomed to on your students' report cards. Unlike that, though, is just one grade. So they're going to have to develop a plan and a formula that's going to show how they're going to be able to get a letter grade that represents compositively what, what the success level of that school is. So that's coming, what we've been told, first of November. So more data is going to be released, and as it gets released, we'll share it with you guys prior to.
Okay. Any updates from any committees or anybody have questions on updates within the system? Be our final piece of conversation? Anybody have any questions about anything or anything else needs to come before the board?
I can talk a little bit about the, about some of the capital projects.
Capital projects, sure, okay.
The, the most recent capital projects meeting we had was with the architect, with Ben and Clay, who represent the capital projects, along with Bria and Clay Murley. We sat down with the architect, hashed out some considerations for how to adjust. Primarily, the ag and the auto shop was the one that had some revision in the drawing. I had a drawing shared with me by John Mark Williams, who was our construction manager a few days ago, and I carried that to James Carter and the two ag teachers, Theresa Kraus and Clint Isbell, and got their feedback for these drawings. Other than, on the ag side, other than just adding windows in certain key places, that's the only really thing they had. Well, one was to, for, there was a plan to include, remember, a school nurse's station in there? And the request was, can we have that as bathroom instead? Since there probably won't be a school nurse assigned to that location every school day. So the location of the build will be on the, the Eagles Edge grounds. There is plans in the works to relocate those ladies. In fact, we've got Mia here now, who is one of those three, about relocating them to another location. Our maintenance house that is next to East Chester, just east of it, is going to be clear of the maintenance crew at, during fall break. And then there will be attention to renovating that house to make it more office space-ready for those ladies to be able to move in. For additional needs that they have for equipment that they have, or like in the case of Family Resource Center, the cloth products that they have and the food products, we'll have some other locations in the schools in strategic places that we can keep a good handle on and, and make sure that the inventory is solid. But more than likely, unless there's some major issue with that space, there's, there's several rooms that can be used for office space and we're pricing out what it would cost to redo the walls, the floors, replace the windows. Outside, it looks pretty good, but inside, it needs some attention. And once that is done, then we'll be relocating that and then beginning the process of demolition of the Eagles Edge location, so it can be ready for this build of the ag and auto. The, the frontage of the ag and auto shop will face Baptist Avenue and the, the order of it, the, where your greenhouse is now and where the shed is now, that side of it will be our ag side of the shop. And then the automotive side will be back toward Jack's Creek Street. So the structure of it looks pretty good. And, and I would say this, and in encouraging word, it's within budget right now. It's, John Mark showed me that as the plans were, that was shown to me on, I guess it was yesterday. No, yes, yesterday. It's at a budget of one point nine million, one point ninety plus, but still under two million dollars for the build. Y'all got, either guy's got something to add?
No, sir. You covered it.
All right, any other questions or updates you'd like before we adjourn? If not, the next meeting we have is Thursday, October nineteenth. We will be actually on location at Chester County Junior High for the next meeting on October nineteenth. And being that's the end of agenda, we'll officially adjourn this meeting.